All right, Kevin, you're gonna be presenting on this?
Yes, I am. So can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great.
Okay, so can you see the screen presentation that I have up everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and start.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, I'll be able to at least give you some ideas about the questions that you have Commissioner Schof and Mayor and the rest of the commissioners. So I'll start, go ahead with a little bit of information on the various project, types of deliveries. So on a design bid build, it's very traditional, it's very common, standard contract terms and conditions, it has standard forms, and it usually involves an issuance, an invitation to bid. You get competitive bidding, so you usually get low bid results, which theoretically results in lower costs. You can, the completion time takes a little bit longer because you've got to do the design, then you gotta put it out to bid, which takes a few months, and then you gotta build the job. And that time takes whatever it does. The benefits of it is the price is generally lower. It's best when the scope is well-defined and the bid documents are thoroughly prepared. The risk is only on the contractor if the bid documents are well-prepared. Otherwise, the risk is on the owner. If you have some issues with the design quality, you're gonna have to issue change orders for, which is the case in either way, but administratively, it's a little bit more cumbersome if it's a design bid build, if that's the case. It's best for projects that are very straightforward, such as street paving, lighting, landscaping, and non-complex building projects. Okay. The disadvantages of it is it's less flexibility in getting the project started early, due to the time required to prepare and solicit an invitation to bid. There's more contract administration time required by the owner in getting change orders approved. There's less transparency in the contractor's pricing, but again, you're getting a low bid, so that doesn't necessarily mean anything. You have restricted ability to value engineer costs without going back out to bid. You have a greater potential for scope disagreements and more risk for the owner in that case. A construction manager at risk, a CMAR with a GMP. You have an issuance of a request for qualifications, and selection is based on those qualifications. It's good for more complex contracting, so you have the definitions in the contract of what the cost of the work is. That's defined in the contract terms for a CMAR contract. The contractor is design, that's the best way of doing it. And then you have the flexibility to value engineer and negotiate a GMP price, so you can look at things that you may want to not do more readily and easily than you could if you have a hard bid job. The costs, perceptually, CMAR, GMP is more expensive. And I'll get into it a little bit further in the presentation about how that's true or not. Guaranteed maximum price, it's billed an actual cost incurred, plus whatever fees they have on top of that. The fees do include the construction manager's risks, because he's taking on all the risk for the project, or for most of the risks, I'd say. Actually. Transparency in the process, so you have open book on the cost, you get to look at the subcontractor's bids, but you do have less competition in the bidding process. They do usually get, you know, three bids from various subcontractors, and it's not like you have the full market out there, that you have the competitive bidding for, or bidding from on the subcontracts that they do let. The delivery time, you can actually start sooner because you don't have to have the design all complete. You get a pre-construction contract with the CMAR, and they get to work on that simultaneously while you're completing the design, and it can help with determining what you want to do with that design as far as where the pricing is headed, in what directions head in higher-low. The benefits of it, the price is capped, you have a guaranteed maximum price. There are some construction risks transferred to the construction manager. It's best when you have unknowns, like streetscapes with unknown underground conditions, or large, complex, multi-phase projects. There's a more efficient team effort and problem-solving administration of the project throughout, from the beginning to the end. And it's best when you have a construction manager that's very experienced in this process. Benefits is the owner doesn't have as much internal soft costs in managing a project, so we don't have to spend as much effort in the field watching over what you're doing, because that's the construction manager risks responsibility for the most part. Although we do still do that, but it's not to the same extent. It commences simultaneously with the completion of the design and pricing. It's more effective insight in making design decisions because of real cost data associated with those decisions, so in other words, we wanna do it this way, and the contractor may say, "I don't think that's the best way of doing it, we might wanna look at this alternative instead," and that might cost, you know, that might be cheaper for you in the long run, and those types of decisions, we have the the more availability of making those types of decisions based on the cost it's gonna be for whatever they are. The changes during the constructions, the cost can be improved more readily, since they usually have a contract contingency fund that's built into the contract that the owner has the ability to use for things that come up for unforeseen conditions, etc. The disadvantages of it, you do have a pre-construction contract with a CMAR to begin with, and you pay him a fee roughly, probably 1% maybe of the construction cost for him to review the documents and develop the GMP, and if he can't come to terms with that, basically, that's a sunk cost, you'd have to pay them anyways. And it's generally a more expensive delivery method, and I'll get into that a little bit further. So, what I looked at here, and I don't know that there's really a full 100% answer either way, but I looked at some data from 14 contracts with the city of West Palm Beach from 2017 to 2020, and I looked at six different GMP contracts that we had. The three Climatus jobs, the Heritage Alley, which was just the Phase 3 and the Heritage Alley, we just awarded those contracts, and they're just getting started right now. The Phase 1 and Phase 2, Fire Station 8 and Fire Station number 4, and you can see that the range of cost on those is all 2, 2.5 million, all the way up to $8 million, and so it's a higher cost range for the GMP contracts. The hard bid contracts, I looked at eight of those, and those vary from $88,000 all the way up to about $700,000. I looked at these very two other ones here. Actually, one of them, the Fern Street Streetscape project, that was a $1.38 million hard bid job as well. It isn't the elaborate streetscape that the Climatus Street is, but I wanted to find some contracts that had relatively high costs that were hard bids, so we could look at the statistics on those. So here's the comparison data for the GMP and the hard bid, design bid builds. So, average construction cost, or average direct construction cost, 4.8 million on a GMP, 625,000 for the hard bids, this is based on these 14 contracts. The average total contract cost was 6.48 million on the GMPs versus 716,000 on the hard bids. The increase in the final contract amount from what it was to begin with was 0% on the GMPs, but it went up by an average of 7.6% on the hard bids. Then you go to the breakdown of what makes up the whole contract, you take the direct construction costs, and then there's a percentage added on to those for the next three items. The general conditions, which covers mobilization, MOTs, bonds, etc., insurance. It's a 7.15% average on the GMP contracts. It was a 14.79% on the hard bids. Then there's a contractor's fee that's added on with the GMPs, which includes mostly the staffing that they're gonna have for managing the project, and that is about 11.66% average on top of the direct construction costs, whereas in the hard bids, you don't really know what that is, because it's included in the price. And then there's a profit that the contractor puts on it, on the GMP, and that averaged out to be 7.09%, whereas it's included in the hard bid jobs. And then you have an allowance for contingency, which is generally 5.15% on the GMPs, and we don't have that on the hard bids. But that's a statistical comparison.
So, although, Kevin, before you move off of that, two things. One is commissioners, don't forget to use the chat function if you do have a question. But Kevin, I wanted, we're not really comparing apples to apples with this chart, right? I mean, by definition, you said that some of the hard bids that we've done have been for less complicated projects or something, so while we were looking at average direct construction cost, 4.8 million to 625,000, it's different project, different types of projects, typically.
They are typically different projects, that's why the one streetscape job we had was the Fern Street, where we had a hard bid on that, it's not the same level of complexity as the Climatus ones, but some of the other projects that I did use as comparison were utility projects, where we're doing underground utilities and road restorations on them. And so they have some of the same characteristics. Obviously, the fire stations are a whole different animal altogether. I didn't have any statistics on a building that would be representative to compare to those. But I think if you look at the the data that has been provided for the various GMP contracts, the six that I looked at, that, you know, the direct construction cost and the fees that are added on top of that with a CMAR GMP, those are relatively consistent across the various contracts that I looked at. Whereas on the hard bids, you're gonna get a general conditions percentage, and then you're gonna have all the other things included, but then you have the potential for an increase in the contract price because of the fact that you're gonna have to issue change orders to the contractor if there's a scope change, or if there's some other unforeseen condition that may come up. Whereas you have a contingency allowance usually in the GMP contracts that allows you to absorb that without increasing the actual contract price. And actually, in some cases, like for instance, in the last Climatus job, you know, we're gonna end up getting like $900,000 back from them on the GMP, because they they were very conservative in their estimates of, you know, what they were adding on to that. On Fire Station 4, we ended up with about nine, a little under $10,000 back on that contract from Hedrick Brothers. But basically, we're looking at, get a GMP, and that's what the cost is gonna be, whereas it's not actually known for a hard bid job. And, you know, I tried to just get some contracts that were high-value, that were relatively similar, at least in the dollar amounts, and the nature of the work, other than the two fire stations, so it's kind of an apple, I mean, an orange and a tangerine, if you wanna say so, but it's not a direct, we don't have a direct correlation between the different characteristics of the projects, other than what I just described.
Okay, all right.
Okay?
Before you head off, Commissioner Lampard has a question.
Thank you. Just a quick question, Kevin. The contingency amount that you just were talking about, can the construction company tap in? To tap into that, they would need to talk with us before they do that, right? Or do they have access to that at their discretion?
No, no, that's entirely controlled by the owner. We have a form that we fill out that's signed by the project manager, there's the terms of the contract allow for that, and that is only utilized with the owner's permission. And at the owner's discretion.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Wen, did you wanna comment on this slide as well?
No, sir.
I got a message, did you got a question or comment?
It's a clarification on the Fern Street project that Kevin mentioned earlier. It is an FDOT local agency program project, and that was bid out as a low-bid project, but FDOT required us to have CEI, which stands for Construction Engineering Inspection, and that's typically about 12% of the project cost.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Kevin, you can continue.
Okay, so here's, here's what the data shows, and this is the best conclusion or comparison that I could come up with, so I'm looking at for $1,000 of direct construct in the final finality of everything. So you look on the GMP, you get 71 dollars against, you know, so whatever that is, 7.7%. You get $125 on fee, $85 on profit, and 66 in contingency. You don't have an increase, so your net final cost is basically 134.7% of what the direct construction cost is. On a hard bid for every $1,000, it's the project cost, you have $148 against the general conditions. You end up with about an $87 increase in the cost just from change orders, and that's on the average of those eight contracts. You end up with 123.5% of what the direct construction cost was. And so, the increase in the COs that I put on the GMP doesn't include any credits that would come back from the GMP, which in the Climatus case and the Fire Station 4 case. So I just put the asterisk there. So basically, you're looking at, there's about 11% difference between a GMP and a hard bid job, when you add up all the numbers and you base it on a on a comparative direct construction cost for whatever the work is. Now, there is one other example that I have where we made a decision to not use a CMAR and GMP, because when we had the preliminary GMP, we were working with one of the firms to come up with a GMP, and this is on the 31st to 35th Street Utilities, which is replacing storm sanitary water, and then doing the street restorations and landscaping. So we were working with Whiting Turner on this back in December of 2018, and they had a GMP estimate back then of 6.1 million. Well, we decided not to go that direction, because we had budgetary constraints. We decided to put it out to bid as a low bid, and we just got those bids in this month, and we got a bit low bid of 3.8 million. So although there's a potential for change orders at the end of that, which could be on the average of 7.6% and there will be more effort internally on the managing of the project in the field, but you can see that it's quite a bit of difference there with going with a GMP versus going out to bid on that. And so we elected to do so, and I think it's gonna pay off for us in that regard. And that is basically the end of my presentation, so I'm trying to display to you the data that I could gather from our contracts and where the numbers all ended up. And I think for the most part, depending on the type of project we're doing, I think sometimes a CMAR is better. It is a little bit more expensive, and if you really need to get started on something, I think it's the way to go. If you have some questions, you may have some scope problems later. I think it's good to have the contractor involved in that early. You do pay for that, there's a premium cost for doing so, but then there's also the oh, for sure, what your cost is gonna end up being. And I think we get a very good job out of the CMAR contracts that we do. We haven't had any problems with those six that I've mentioned that I use as the examples for the sample size there, and with the hard bid jobs, we get a good product as well. It does take a lot more effort to manage and administer those projects, but if we do have some serious budget constraints, which we do, sometimes it's better to go out to bid on those things if we have the time to do so. So that's my presentation, and it's up to you to decide.
Thank you. And what you didn't include there on this particular chart are the soft costs, what we call the soft costs of the internal time to administer on a, on a design build. So that 120, the difference between 1 and 34.7% and 1 and 23.5% could perhaps be narrowed, depending on how you calculated the value of the internal staff time, correct?
That's correct, and as Wen mentioned, like, for instance, on the Fern Street one, that was roughly about a 12% cost to hire a consultant to do that, so when you look at that, that's if we have to hire an outside consultant to do so. If we do it ourselves, it might be a little bit less percentage, but yes, that factor is not included in these numbers.
Okay.
For this discussion alone.
No, no, that's fine. All right, we do have some questions. Madam President Schof first.
Thank you. I just wanted one, one point of clarification and then one comment. The point of clarification is we keep talking about in a CMR contract, getting credits back. Just to clarify, that's not in fact a credit, that is the return of our contingency. So there's not been a cost savings, there just hasn't been additional change orders.
No. It may be just because when they put together the GMP estimate, they felt this is what this particular portion of the work was gonna cost, when they end up doing all of the subcontracting and buyouts of all the subcontracts and everything like that, there may end up being some cost savings there. We had that situation on Fire Station 8, where there was a number of cost-saving measures that were, or cost-saving realizations in the subcontracting of it, but yet we used up all of the contingency and then some to be able to deal with some additional work that we had to have done out there, and so it's a combination of the two things. It isn't always just the contingency coming back, it's a lot of other factors. It's the overall cost, the overall project amount, or contract amount that's been examined. On the Phase 2 Climatus job, there was a lot of underruns and things like that in the actual contract subcontracting. And then there's still some work that's left to do on that. Once we get done with the fountains, we still gotta restore that plaza area, so we're holding off doing that. And there were some other furnishings that we're still gonna provide at the end, and so that project isn't actually closed out yet. But as Burkhart noted to you in a meeting a few weeks ago, that they anticipate they're gonna save us about 900 grand on that overall job. So, it is added to the contract amount, but it's not just contingency.
Got it, and Mayor, if I may have my clarification too, second point.
Yes.
I wanted to just say again, thank you for the presentation, Kevin. I think what, what has been displayed here, and what I would argue is that there is a purpose for each types of these contracts, because also on a bid-build contract, if it's a large contract, that takes a contractor a lot of time and money to just put together a bid, which if there's three bids, them are trying to get, and so you may end up not getting as many qualified contractors that wanna take the time and effort and the risk to put together that, that contract, so I acknowledge that. I think where I start to look, coming from an area of professionalism in this industry, is when we have projects that are lower risk, like new buildings, where we have completely engineered what a building should look like, and it's coming from the ground up, no renovations, no changes, we should, we should be fairly limited in our scope of change orders. When we have projects that are renovation of buildings and things with a lot of unknowns, I guess I would argue that is the place where a CMAR contract really makes sense. So I think that there, there's no one-stop-shop answer, but I think as Kevin had displayed on the utilities project, the redo of the roads coming down by nearly $2 million, I think there is a place where each one of these contracts has a validity, and so, you know, Mayor, I don't know where, if we have a set procedure that says if it's this type of project, it goes towards this contract first, or how we can do that, but I think that was really my point in having this discussion today, is that it felt like for a while, we've trended towards just a default of construction manager at-risk contract, and I think that there's a use for both of those types of contracts.
Well, I think it's clear that historically, we have employed both, and I believe staff is using their best judgment to, for each particular type of project. But I'll let staff speak to that. Commissioner Nearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. Kevin, thank you for the overview, and Madam President, thank you for broaching this. It's probably, as a commissioner, this has probably been my largest or biggest learning curve, if you will, so happy to hear more information on it. Kevin, the last slide, and you don't need to go back to it, but where you talked about the approach on a project, and one came in at, I think it was a CMAR at 6.1 versus taking it a different approach, and then it coming in at 3.8 or there about. My question is, in terms of change orders, when we take that approach, in terms of change orders, is there a cap? Do we get in a situation where ultimately we end up paying more than the initial CMAR bid? How does that work in terms of the change orders and the maximum amount that they can then add?
Okay, well, you broke up there, but I think I understand what your question is. So traditionally, we haven't exceeded what we would have had on a CMAR based on the change orders for the design bid build jobs. If there was a very poor scope of work, a very poor bid documents could end up with a much higher percentage of change orders. We did have one project where that was the case, but that's very, that's not very, very common whatsoever. Normally, again, we're gonna stay within that, I mean, it's a 23.5% increase in the direct construction cost, including change orders for various things, statistically at least, and and if you throw on the soft costs that are involved with that, you got another 5 to 12%, and so mean that we're gonna end up paying more with a design bid build than we would with a CMAR. That answer your question, or not?
Good, Commissioner Nearing?
I think so. It doesn't happen very often. There's an occasion that you can recall where it happened just recently or once, but that doesn't happen very often.
Let me give you another example. The Southall of Tennis Center, we were working with a CMAR on that, but honestly, it was just too much. And so we're putting that out to bid, we haven't got the bids in yet, but we're certainly hopeful and confident that we're gonna end up with a much lower price than what we're getting from that CMAR. So that's, that's yet to be seen actually, but we certainly anticipate that we're gonna get a good price on that going with a hard bid.
Okay, uh. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Kevin. I do have one observation and then a question as well. Um, on the CMAR slides. On one of the earlier slides, you said that it was perceptually more expensive. And then when on the later slides. It said it was generally more expensive. And so. You know, I was really looking for some clarification on that, although my question really leads to um. If, I don't know if you have this insight or if we need to go back to previous commission work session um recordings, but. I thought that it, it was um indicated that the commission and administration had previously given direction that we would be. Either leaning more towards CMAR or following a certain guideline for determining when CMAR would be more appropriate than. The design bid build um. Process. And so I'm just wondering if you can provide any input on that, either what you all have been following, moving. Up to date, or if we're going to be changing that moving forward?
Well, um, I think we're going to continue to do, uh, obviously, we're in the last part of the Climatis Job uh project. Uh, we're doing that as a CMAR. And of course, the Heritage Alley is also being done as a CMAR. Uh, those are CRA bond projects. Um, I think uh our inclination. On any new projects that we're going to do, like for instance, the Southall of Tennis Center or other buildings. We're also doing the uh, that building that's overrun Australian that was uh. Was the Sickle Cell Building. That's a, that's going to be put out as a hard bid. We're in the design process of that. And um, we think that we're probably going to lean more towards going for design bid build jobs than we are with CMARs. Primarily because we feel that uh we can get a better price if we do it that way. But we have to make sure that we have very good design documents in order to do so. I think the fire stations were uh, were expensive. Uh, if they had been bid out as hard bid jobs, they might have been a little bit less expensive. It might have had to do with the timing of when those actually went out. But um. Overall management of them and the quality of the work, I think, was, was superior. And I think that the fact that we had a CMAR on board to do each of those projects, two different CMARs. Right Stevenson and Hedrick Brothers, I think we ended up with very good projects because of that. And um, so. But again, our inclination is going to be more towards putting things out to bid. Just because we have such budget constraints and we think that we can probably manage that better. Uh, based on the amount of money that we have to do these projects with.
Did you have a follow-up, Commissioner?
Um, I guess just, I, I don't know if this process lends itself to some sort of um. Rubric of determining which projects are better for which type of bid.
No, I think we're going to have to defer to a great extent on staff and their expertise. Uh, I, I, I think what staff probably needs to be prepared for in the future is when it does come up. Um, to the commission being able to articulate. Why uh one option or the other was selected. So. You need to, to put that into your. Your cap when you're discussing these uh with, with commissioners going forward, I would think. Um, okay, uh, Commissioner Peduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Kevin, for the presentation. I found it to be helpful in understanding the, the uh, the process. I'm certainly not coming from a perspective from like Commissioner Shove from the area of expertise of only. I have handled some construction defense cases, but so please bear with me if this sounds like an odd question, but is there any way? Um, it to have some sort of a hybrid between the two bid processes, kind of an alternative bidding process? Where you could solicit, you know, both types of bids? Is there any way of, of doing that? Uh, and then, because then we'd be actually comparing apples to apples to determine. Which process on an individual project we might be more comfortable with. Is there any way of doing that?
Well, it would be difficult because um you'd have to have full hundred percent design if you're going to put the thing out to bid. I mean, you could put something out to bid. You know, at a sixty percent design documents. Uh, and have a whole lot of allowances. I mean, there might be some way of doing that. I don't know if that would, I don't, I don't think. The way that uh. The scope needs to be as more specifically defined for a hard bid job. I don't know that they would, it would um. You know, allow for that type of a, a, a hybrid thing. What I did think of though, while I was putting this together was. We might want to just put some contingency allowance if we could uh legally into some of these hard bid jobs so that we have a better way of, of managing the changes. You know, because sometimes we have to go back to the commission with change orders or. Uh, if we have the budget available, we can certainly do so. But it does take a num- it does take a lot of time to process a change order administratively. Um, and uh, I think that might be helpful as far as expediting, getting um. The um. Changes to the work being um finalized. And so the contractor can get paid sooner. Uh, that might be helpful. But I don't think they lend themselves to be able to hybrid themselves because of the fact that. The design needs to really be a hundred percent better, you know, a hundred percent before we go out to bid on these things. So. And that's where you get the best price.
Thank you. And I know that Commissioner Shove learned to comment on it.
Well, let me, let me, let, let me run the, the, the meeting. Uh, Christie, Commissioner Fox was next in, in, in terms of order.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kevin. I think my question was answered. I had the same question as Commissioner Lambert. I was just looking for clarification about. How it was decided, you know, which bid we were going to go forward with. So I think that was answered. Thank you.
Okay, now Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to follow up, Commissioner Peduzzi and Kevin. Um, I think Kevin's comments were spot on. There's not really a, a middle ground between. Making the two bid processes, but it does make sense if there is a legal way to put in a contingency in a bid build. Because if not every little change, which in a bid build contract, because you have. Unknowns that are going to come up that aren't included in the contract, they're going to have to come back. Um, for any, any small thing. If they run into an underground utility problem or, you know, uh sanitary sewer, they're going to have to bring that back to the commission. Whether it's complete redo of pipes underneath the building, or if it's just a small, we need to move this from here to here. So, you know, Mayor, I, I leave it to you and, and discussions with staff, but. I would certainly be in support of providing a contingency on a bid build contract because again, if we don't use that during a contract. The, I think the terminology we've been using here is that it gets credited back to us. So if there's five to ten percent built into a project for some unknowns. And we don't use that, that money doesn't go out the door, but it still provides. Staff and project management, the flexibility to be able to make changes without a delay. You know, if they're in, in mid-project and they have to wait um two to three weeks to get on a commission agenda and get that approved, it may delay their process. And that's arguably not. Not what the purpose of this discussion has been. So I mean, that, that sounds like an excellent suggestion from, from my point of view.
All right, duly noted. Uh, any further questions, uh, comments? I don't see any uh. Response. All right. Kevin, thank you very much. Uh, you, you've heard some of the. Questions, concerns of the commissioners and uh, we will uh discuss that internally as to how we proceed. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, uh Broadway Lane Elimination Application. Wen?
Hi, good morning. Um, I'm going to share my screen right now if everybody can see that. Um, so um, uh, good morning. And um, before I go into the details of this, um, this project, I want to give an overview of. Um, what the city has been doing in support of the CRA and um the redevelopment efforts of this um, of the Northern End. Um, so we, we were asked to look at Broadway, but Broadway connects Twenty-Fifth Street all the way to Fifty-Ninth. Um, so we looked at it from two separate aspects. Number one, Broadway is the most dangerous corridors for pedestrian bicyclists in the city as, uh, as of today. Um, we look at short-term improvements and long-term improvements. Um, north of um Forty-Fifth Street, um, this belongs to the Florida Department of Transportation. And we are looking at some um small, short-term improvements such as lighting improvements, you know, updating crosswalk, maybe creating refuge islands for people to cross the street. South of Forty-Fifth Street, uh, which is uh vetted for a larger discussion of um. Uh, what are some of the changes that we can do to really change the purpose of and need of the corridor? And then a, a few years ago, um, two years ago, we received a um grant application from DOT also for Thirty-Sixth Street. As an improvement from Australian all the way to Flagler. Um, at, at the time, we were approved for up to seven million dollars worth of improvement at this, along this corridor. Um, just last year, Twenty-Fifth Street, we went in for um consideration with the city commission and also um for another lane elimination. Project very similar to what we're thinking of Broadway. And this project was also awarded by uh FDOT for up to five million dollars. So this, in this discussion, this is a broad overview of what we've done in the past five years. As far as um trying to connect uh the city's vision with the CRA's uh. Vision of redevelopment, the area and providing connectivity. So um. This project, Broadway itself, it started in twenty thirteen as um the project was initiated. Uh, when I joined the city in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, there was a big kickoff on vision. And during that time. Um, a lot of information were collected from adjacent property owners and um people in the North End to see what would we like Broadway to be. Um, from there, we spent years of really nego- not negotiating, but coordinating with FDOT. Um, other uh agencies and really looking at the technical feasibility of what we can do for Broadway itself. Um, so to speak further about the project location, it's um along Twenty-Fifth, uh, Broadway Avenue. Along Twenty, uh, from Twenty-Fifth to Forty-Fifth Street. It's about uh, a little over a mile and we have a very generous right away, about seventy to eighty feet. Uh, it varies in some locations. There are some landscape islands out there. Um, but as you can see, there's uh really a harsh condition for pedestrians. Along this area with no shade. Um, there's no bicycle amenities. And of course, um, there are also um other aspect. When we do our technical review, there's no crosswalks, no high. Emphasis crosswalks. And of course, it's a high crash corridor for us. And I'm going to go into some details of um crash data along this area. So um, we started this um project again back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen from engineering perspective. So we looked at data from that. Um, that end. At the time, we had, between twenty twelve to twenty fourteen, we had uh fifty-nine crashes. And um, over thirty percent of them are pedestrian and bicyclists. So more recently, as we're re-analyzing Broadway and we looked at more data. The crashes has increased to a hundred and eighty-five of fifty-nine. And um, this is a breakdown again of what type of crashes. And um, I'm going to briefly summarize of what changed from twenty twelve, twenty fourteen to twenty seven, twenty nineteen. Um, so as we know, travel demand has increased, right? Uh, but it increased by a small percentage compared to the crash increases, which is like by threefold. Um, typical crashes are uh on the weekend and really midday to late afternoon northbound with. Uh, which makes a lot of sense because there's a lot of people traveling um, uh, north of the city to either go home or to their final destination. Um, and then there are um twelve uh bike and pet crashes during that time. Um, and uh, we looked at the left turn and their rear ends. And it's really important because. Uh, right now Broadway North is four lanes um divided with some medians. And so uh, when the, you have those turning movements when you're having people making a left turn entering. That's where a lot of the, the left turn, the T-bones um crashes are at. So with that um information, what can we do to reduce the crashes and the type of crashes along this area? So we looked at transforming a four lane into a three lane section. Now, earlier rendition of um the concept has taken it down to two lane with a center um, uh, multi-use path. But that design was um. Yeah, I would say um, we coordinate with FDOT and that design, this is their recommendation to take it to a three lane. And um, you know, there's a lot of data out there of uh what we call this. We call it uh FDOT refer to as a lane elimination. Some other um people might call a road diet, but regardless of what it is. There's been proven data that this type of concept will reduce crashes along corridor. FHWA released this information between nineteen to twenty forty-seven reduction in overall crashes. When a lane elimination or a road diet is applied to a corridor. So how do we do um this, this application in general? So it, it really all started with traffic analysis. We start with what is the data today? What are the data that's collected today? Um, and then we looked at all the intersections and how they function. Are there some short-term improvements as can we optimize the signal? Can we add more time? Can we give more time to left turn movements? Then we take that number and based on the county model, right? Uh, this is um. The, the travel demand model that the Palm Beach TPA put together. We grew the number to twenty forty. At the time, we grew the number to twenty forty. What does, what are these intersection look like in twenty forty? And again, when we talk about intersection operations, we're only talking about morning and afternoon rush hours only. That's the peak hour demand. So at night or on the weekend, when all these crashes are really the severity of these crashes are happening. It's um, it's not being taken into consideration in the traffic uh modeling. And then we looked at diversions. What does our model show in twenty forty? Is it going to divert to parallel network? Or uh, within our model right now, there are no diversion. What that means is that um. The, the level service, the intersection analysis has enough capacity to accept all the travel demand in twenty forty. And then, of course, lastly, we looked at what are the safety benefits verse, uh, versus uh level service? And um, you, you know, of, we looked at the crash modification factors and just a, a really simple example right here. Um, if you have no crosswalks for pedestrian and you install a high visibility crosswalk itself. The reduction is up to forty percent. And that's a very, very exciting benefit for us to see um in this area. So when we, uh, so we finalized this report and during the time we um. Spent a lot of time coordinating with FDOT. This is a US One Broadway Avenue is their, their road. So we have to um. You know, look to them to say, are these numbers going to work? Uh, where are we at? So this is the application process that we're talking about today. And so uh, with that, um, from that traffic modeling and from those traffic numbers, we can take a corridor that looks like this today. This is just a screenshot from Google. And then we looked at what does that look like in the future? And how does that look like from a rendering um perspective? So I'm going to go through some details that is feasible in this area, technically feasible. So we, we want to, uh, the most important thing is really marked crosswalk, right? Like, how do we get people across the street safely? So we looked at providing uh more crosswalk, east-west crosswalk to connect to um, the, the kids that's going to North Borough Elementary School. The other thing that we looked at is. When we refurbished a travel lane in um the lane elimination um. Application and the guidance from FDOT, you have to refurbish it to another mode of transportation. And that's very important for us to talk about. So what we're proposing is a very wide sidewalk up to twelve feet. Okay? We can provide protected um or um, um areas where we marked it for bicyclists. Uh, but this is also very important because now you're providing multimodal improvements in the area. Of course, there's lighting improvements. There's transit improvements in this area. Um, signalization, improving it and installing new signals along the corridor. And then uh, lastly, when we do, or when we take into consideration of a project of this scale, we looked at how do we improve utilities also? So that we don't have to come back in a few years and um upgrade that. So these, and this is a general proposed layout of what technically we can do based on the traffic analysis that we performed. Um, so there are a lot of positive on economic impact um to um these type of projects. And again, you know, going back to the core value of why we're doing a project like this in the North End, it's really to revitalize, right? Um, so um, you know, Charlotte, Carolina, they've indicated that forty-three million increase in non-residential tax value after they conducted their road diet. There's other information out there with um the um Indianapolis Culture Trail also and the redevelopment opportunity that comes after the project is completed. And also, uh, one other thing that we have to do is coordinate with uh our uh fire department to see how we can provide a predictable and practical path and like. to see how we can provide a predictable and practical, uh, path in like any emergency responses. Um, North Broadway is very important, um, to our area since it is, it serves a lot of the, um, St. Mary's Hospital and all those paths, um, along there. So, um, if you look at this image right here with the four-lane section versus the three-lane, it provide a more predictable, uh, path for, um, fire rescue to, uh, go to their destination. So as far as communications, what have we done since twenty thirteen, um, and twenty, uh, until to date? Uh, we had quite a bit of, um, really stakeholder, um, presentations. And again, this is, um, due to, because it is a DOT right-of-way. Uh, uh, after we collected the community vision, we spent a lot of time coordinating with them. We even went as far as doing a presentation to the town of Palm Beach because of DOT's request. Um, and then, uh, we looked at, um, who else do we need to, um, uh, to review the traffic analysis, right? Now, the county, um, Palm Tran, um, and also in twenty seventeen, the Palm Beach TPA, the Transportation Planning Agency, conducted a US One corridor study that looked at the entire county. And, um, this concept is very consistent with their planning effort. We had, um, three resolutions that's referenced, uh, this project. In twenty sixteen, we actually submitted the, um, application to DOT the first time already. This is really just an update, um, as a revision, are we still interested in, um, pursuing something like this? Um, and then on top of that, we received quite a bit of, um, support letters from, um, the Chamber, Ravovich, and Khan, and, uh, other investment firms. And then, so how much is a project, something like this, is gonna cost? This is our planning level, um, dollar. It's, uh, it's, it's a very, uh, I would say expensive project because of the level of reconstruction that we're putting into this. Right now, we're in the planning phase. Um, and so, um, the, the total cost is upward of thirteen million dollars. And you can see that I broke it down to streetscape, hardcape, uh, hardscape design. And of course, this is a DOT project, so there is going to be construction engineering inspection. In the Palm Beach tip right now, which is the Transportation Improvement Plan, there is, uh, approximately one point two eight million dollars. This is a real project in the FDOT work program already. And then, um, a few years ago, we allocated, um, about five point four million dollars from the penny sales tax, um, for Broad- the Broadway corridor. There is going to be a match, um, and just because from our experience with working with FDOT that, uh, there are certain things that they cannot participate in, um, such as streetscaping, um, landscaping, irrigation, uh, but other elements that, uh, contributes to safety is, um, participating from their perspective. And so design hardscape, which is crosswalk, sidewalks, those are type of improvements are DOT participation. And so this is a very, um, high-level overview of what a project like this would cost. And then, really for the next steps for us, because up to this point, we've conducted the traffic analysis. Uh, we've, um, coordinated and presented to our stakeholders. Uh, we, um, we have to demonstrate a safety benefit for this project. Uh, because we, we need to figure out, uh, how are we gonna expend this money? And how can we, can we bring funding back to our community? Um, and then, uh, looking at, uh, a, really a, an approval and a recommendation from the city, um, commission to how do we proceed? And then, um, after that is, really, our planning phase is only initiating. There's, uh, there's going to be years of coordinating, design, details, community engagement. And of course, more importantly for us is secure funding. And so I've been in communications with the TPA. And, uh, what the TPA has indicated to me is that they actually allocated and prioritized US One funding. If this is a priority to the city, they will, uh, they will allocate and fund this project out of their work program. And so, um, I'm gonna end my presentation right here and, um, ready for any questions.
Uh, thank, thank you for that presentation. So in summary, um, you think the funding is available through the TPA?
Yes, sir.
If we, so, and what do they need from us to, um, uh, show our commitment to the project? Some kind of, is that the commission resolution you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Uh, the commission resolution and, um, also for us to submit the formal application to FDOT. Um, so it's, uh, we have the package prepared already. Uh, the last thing that we need is the resolution, yes.
Okay, uh, Madam President Schof, you got a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, two questions if I might. Um, one is being that this is an FDOT project, it's got FDOT funding, it's got TPA funding. I know what I've heard from a lot of neighbors is, um, the prioritization of projects. You know, there's a lot of issues we have with flooding on North Flagler Drive as well as South Flagler Drive. So it might understand from your comments that on this particular stretch of road, there is funding available from sources that would not be available for a North Flagler Drive or a South Flagler Drive because this is a, a state road.
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, um, and then secondly, if I might, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, my other comment is that I know we, we've been doing this project from twenty thirteen on. And so a lot of times what happens is the history of, of people who have been involved with the project kind of come and go. And so one of our latest meetings that we had, I, I think neighbors left there still feeling like they had a lot of concerns that weren't addressed. And one of the requests that I had was that we revisit this with the neighborhoods. Um, I think everyone is in agreement that we need a change on Broadway. Um, but I think there was a lot of unresolved, um, issues in looking at traffic potentially diverting into the neighborhoods, um, along with a lot of other issues. Were we able to get out and, and, um, workshop this with the neighborhoods? Or what is the plan for that moving forward?
Um, I think the plan for us is, um, really for, from staff perspective is one, are we still interested in pursuing this project? Um, and if we are, then, um, a lot of these can be, um, you know, communicate differently. Um, obviously, we would love to, um, go out to, uh, do a one-on-one and really, uh, workshop it with the, the, the residents in this area, but it's very challenging during this time. I've created quite a bit of resources that I've shared with all the commissioner and, um, uh, administration of, of this project. I, you know, there's like FAQ sites, we can start doing our website. We can start looking at different media channels to really communicate this. I've also prepared the, the, the five common questions that we've heard at the, um, the neighborhood, um, presentation. And you're absolutely right, there's, uh, there's a lot of misinformation out there and there's a lot of fear of traffic diversion. As we know, that traffic in Palm Beach County has gone, um, down, uh, to, uh, about forty percent already. So we don't know what the future is going to look like in this area as far as travel demand. We know that, um, the, the way that people travel, especially from the crash data that we see, is already, um, uh, you know, it's already off-peak. And our, you know, we're not gonna deny that some people will divert, but our traffic modeling shows that there's no diversion, as in there's enough capacity. So I think those kind of messages is really important to, to convey to our residents and, um, really deflect some of these fears that they have. So I would look towards, um, our community engagement after this, uh, to see how we can better message some of these, um, conversations.
Uh, Commissioner Neering?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, uh, very helpful. I think as, as, as one-fifth of the commission, I, I would be interested in moving this forward. But I, I think to Commissioner, uh, President, um, Schof's point, I think kind of this revisiting of the neighborhoods, uh, is critically important. And then, and what I would, what I would like to kind of dig into, not necessarily on this, um, chat, um, or meeting, but at some point in time is what does the redevelopment opportunities look like? As best we can tell, you know, one of the things I, I remember working in an office building, um, on Broadway in the mid-nineties. Um, and I'm preaching to the choir here, not much has changed. And, and part of that has, you know, obviously the zoning complications. And, and so when we throw out redevelopment opportunities, you know, I'm all for it, but I'd like to really, um, hear how a project like this spurs that. Um, I have some ideas about it, but it's mostly anecdotal. So I'd, I'd love to at some point in time be able to sit down with staff and, and kind of think through it. But I think again, equally as important, um, how do we, we take this back out to, uh, the community, um, and, and get their input. So just, those are my comments.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Wen. Um, I'm definitely in favor of the work that we do to decrease, um, pedestrian, uh, accidents or crashes and increase pedestrian safety, reducing crashes amongst cars. But, um, you know, just watching how the community reacted to the length of time that it took to get the South Dixie, um, road project kind of up and going. To Commissioner Schof's point, there was some change in support. And I too would be very supportive of whatever we can do to make sure that we're still soliciting their input, given this new way that we're now doing community outreach. Um, and I think that we need to look at three key areas, which is traffic diversion into the neighborhoods, increased traffic based on new construction and, and new, um, projects going on that road. And then what Commissioner Neering mentioned is the economic impact and, um, what, as we're predicting it being a positive economic impact, what does that look like? Um, and then my question is related to, you know, I, I see the timing of this moving forward. We haven't had any updates on the timing of the South Dixie Road project. And so I don't mean to ask for that update here, but just does this impact that? And are we going to have an update on that at some point?
Um, so, um, to answer, um, your, um, first question, uh, statement, absolutely. We're, uh, we're focused on communicating, uh, what's the next step. Just to, uh, let you know that from DOT's perspective, it's a five-year work program. And we're only, not even in year one yet until we submit this application. Um, for the South Dixie project, it's, uh, it's actually in year two and a half, year three, according to, uh, their process. We have not received any comments from DOT as, uh, you know, COVID nineteen has initiated. But once we have some information, I'll be more happy to share it with the, the commission on the South Dixie project.
Thank you.
Uh, and, and I think the, the, the real issue for the commission is should we move ahead with the application? Uh, we do have, we've identified a bucket of money, uh, that could potentially pay for this. And, uh, should we apply for that bucket of money? Uh, my thinking is we should. We can have these conversations going down the road, even as that, uh, uh, application is being considered. Uh, but I don't want to, I don't think it would be wise to lose out on this opportunity for, for funding, um, as we are pursuing, uh, uh, a, 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 a one-hundred percent or a, 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 a seal of approval from the neighborhoods. I think we can walk and chew gum on this at the same time. Uh, Commissioner Schof?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, certainly looking at, at the city as a whole, I would hate to miss an opportunity in any district, but especially here in District One, to have this kind of funding come into a project. But I want to be really, really careful. And I guess my, my question surrounds, um, when we submit this application, are we committed to the design and then we're taking a design back out to the neighborhoods for their approval? Or are we submitting for the funding with the design concept that we can take out and make adjustments to? Now, I just want to be really clear about what feedback we're going to solicit from the neighborhood, certainly in support of pursuing to get the funding. And, and if that's the case, I just want to understand the process because I, I want the neighbors to be involved in this process and have some, um, some input into the design that will work for their community and not just handed a plan to say, here's, here's what we're gonna do. What do you think?
Um, right, so to answer to, um, your question, um, the concept that we're proposing is going to a four-lane to a three-lane. How we design the detail of that concept, um, for example, uh, where are the parking? And, um, what are the trees that's gonna look like out there? Those are, um, those are the neighborhoods and what can, what kind of landscaping we want to provide. There are some technical aspects of it that we cannot change. Again, uh, it's the traffic analysis that allow us to go to from a four-lane to a three-lane. The other aspect is that site distance triangle. What are the design speed that we're designing for a road like this? Right now, it's designed for, uh, it is posted at thirty-five, but we know that travel speed is much higher than that. So how do we design that speed? If we go to a design speed of thirty miles per hour or thirty-five miles per hour, that changes all the site triangle and so all the site distance, that will allow us to have a difference in, um, where we can put the bus pad and where can, we can put the, um, the landscaping and where can we put our, our, um, really parking itself? The other thing that I want to say is that, again, this project is, um, the, from the penny sales tax, it's in our CIP for five point four million dollars, as listed on the screen right here. If we don't pursue, um, the, uh, the lane elimination application for it to be considered, we as a city needs to determine what other things that we can do to improve safety. And of course, you know, um, staff has analyzed, oh, yes, there are a few things that we can add, like upgrading lighting or adding crosswalks. But even that has to go to DOT for consideration. The, the permitting and the application process is a different, uh, step, but it's still a very lengthy step. So we need, uh, for us to expend our CIP dollars, we need guidance and directions from, um, the mayor and the city commission.
Well, I, I don't know if the question is having the neighborhoods help us design a road. Be- because I, I think we have to leave that up to the experts, uh, as to whether the concept that we're talking about is the appropriate. We are talking about safety and I, I think we have to rely upon the expertise of those who do this for a living, uh, to make the appropriate recommendations for, uh, what the road should look like in order to maximize the safety potential. Uh, so, uh, you know, going to the neighborhoods and certainly advising them of, of, of the concept, uh, this is what's coming down the pike and I guess there may be some decision points, uh, at which the neighborhood can weigh in, that's fine. Uh, but I, 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 I hope the suggestion is not, let's get a green light from the neighborhoods first, uh, before we even submit the application. Or let's help them, let's have the neighborhoods help us design the road before we submit the application. I, I think that would be the tail wagging the dog. Um, Commissioner Schof, you had a follow-up? Mayor, Ma- Madam President, you had a follow-up?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, I, I think the intent here is to make sure that the issues of the community are addressed. Again, I'm not, I'm not a road engineer and arguably, a lot of our population isn't either. So I agree that there is an expertise that would go into road design, but things like overflow of traffic coming into their neighborhoods, um, where buses would have pull-off where parking is. So I, I just want to make sure that we're addressing the concerns, not necessarily having neighbors and advise how to design a road, but let the experts, um, understand what the issues are and adjust the design to accommodate what the issues are. And so my point here is just making sure that we don't have a fully baked plan that is written in stone saying, here's what we're going to do, that we have room to make those adjustments. And really, uh, you know, again, I don't think there's anybody, uh, within the city of West Palm Beach or within District One that wouldn't argue that there needs to be a change on Broadway. And I would look forward to having a reimaging, just as Commissioner says, Commissioner Neering, um, looking at both the economic vitality and the, the accessibility as we are here. So I'm, I'm certainly in favor of making sure that we can get these great resources, uh, to areas in our city where we have partnerships with, with DOT and through penny sales tax and numerous other funding agencies. And in fact, I would look to the neighborhoods north of, of Forty-Fifth Street too, where we're looking at, at various, um, improvement along intersections is, how can we continue that phase on and make sure that we're addressing the entire corridor? So just want to make sure that we're, we're looking to make adjustments, where we need to make adjustments to accommodate the issues, not necessarily dictate the design.
Well, we will hear the issues, uh, and if there's room to, to make those accommodations, I think we can. But you, you have to control expectations. You can't tell the neighborhoods that if you don't like a bus stop at, at X, it is automatically guaranteed we won't have the bus stop there. Uh, we could certainly have the conversation, uh, we hear what their concerns are and we can certainly attempt, uh, to have the, the, the planners and the designers accommodate, uh, those concerns. But we can't create the expectation that they're gonna dict, those concerns would dictate, uh, necessarily dictate the final design. So I think what we're trying to get, uh, a, a, a feel for here is whether there is at least a, a, enough, uh, consensus to move ahead with the application, uh, understanding that we will continue to make outreach to the neighborhoods, hear their concerns. outreach to the neighborhoods, hear their concerns and try to address their concerns. When, I mean, this, does the application mean that we are locked into a particular, an entire design for the road? Or will there be some room for tweaking, if you will?
Right. So Mayor, the, the application is a concept design. And even though our concept design are very technical designs, but this is a technical feasibility to FDOT. During, if this project gets considered and when DOT decides to move forward, they're going to have to perform detailed design as we do and go back to the neighborhood and show them where the bus stops are feasibly can, what type of landscaping can we do? And so all those aspects of it, we'll have to recommunicate. And even though our concept today that we're proposing is really the big picture is the four to three conversion and the multimodal improvements. That's, that's the big picture that we're trying to accomplish today.
Okay. I don't see any other cards or questions. Commissioners, do we have at least some, some method of, some mode of agreement that we can move ahead with the application? One thumbs up? Two thumbs up, three thumbs up, four thumbs up? No pressure, Commissioner Fox.
Oh, yes, I'm in.
Okay, all right. Well, we will have staff and I think as we can, he from the South Dixie, you know, FDOT does come back and they have their, their outreaches as well. We could do our own as a city. So I would certainly commit to us, once the application is filed, to continuing to make neighborhood outreach a priority. Okay, Commissioner Fox, I see that you did have a question.
I do have one question, Wen. Thank you so much for that presentation. I think you mentioned at the beginning that maybe when you had an original design, that they came back with the three lanes. Was there an original design that was, was turned down, that we submitted? Or I was just curious, you know, if we submit another application, what are the chances that they weigh in on other, are there other major items that they would weigh in on or accept, basically?
Yeah, sure. So in 2016, we actually, the resolution in 2016, was actually the concept of a two, going from a four to a two lane and not maintaining the center turn lane. And what we really wanted to do with that concept is to create a linear park in the center, like a Ramblas, so that we can have some kind of multimodal improvements in the center. At the same time, we actually submitted an application for Sun Trail to obtain Sun Trail grants. There were, I believe, over $2 million that was awarded. Since DOT did not approve the two lane concept, we lost that funding also. So through our communication with FDOT, not only that they said, okay, this is not going to work, because they look at the traffic first. The first thing they look at any application is how are the traffic is going to function 20 years from now? And so from there, they recommended to the city to go back and reanalyze what a three lane section would look like and then come back and talk to us. So we, we spent, you know, 2018, 2019, a lot of presentation, a lot of meeting back to, to FDOT. And again, at this point, we've already sent them the traffic analysis for them to look at our numbers. And right now, the numbers is sufficient for them to consider. So that's where we're at today.
Okay, very good. We will, Commissioners, we pledge to keep you apprised of progress with the application as well as present to you a, a plan for engaging the neighborhoods.
Do a resolution?
Well, not, not at this, we'll prepare a resolu, do we need a resolution?
Yes.
So we'll bring that to the commission. Okay. Very soon. Thank you. I don't see anything else on this item. Item number three, police cadets access the city's health clinic. Commissioner Neering?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I brought this request to the city administration and I wanted to make sure that fellow commissioners heard it as well. So I'll just give you a quick kind of level set. So every year, the city has approximately 10 to 15 police explorers that are part of a program through our police department. These explorers are not typically always high school students, ranging anywhere from the ninth grade to the 12th grade. Conversely, each year through our police program, many of those students, four to six of them, transfer into what we call our police cadet program. And they're hired on to the city as a part-time employee, I believe up to 29 hours. And so for those young people who have transferred from, or transitioned from explorers to police cadets, it is typically with the thought that they would eventually become police officers and be sponsored through the police academy via the West Palm Beach Police Department. So what it comes to my attention about a month or a month and a half ago is many of our cadets, again, we're talking only four to six. As a matter of fact, I think currently we have four cadets. Two of them, two of these cadets, while they work part-time for us, are without insurance. And so we know that young people can typically stay on their parents' insurance until they're 26 years of age and then they have to find a job or figure, figure that out. Well, we have cadets currently in the city who, for whatever reason, and I don't pretend to be the expert, I don't know, the issue was brought to me and I said I would bring it to the administration and my fellow commissioners, is that we have cadets who hope to become West Palm Beach police officers who are currently attending school, whether it be at FAU or Palm Beach State, who are without insurance, medical insurance, and work part-time for us and are not, for whatever reason, and I don't know why, are not on their parents' insurance, whether their parents have insurance or not. Again, I don't know. The question that I brought to administration to consider is would we, could we set up a way to have these cadets access our West Palm Beach Medical Clinic for various issues? Now, I brought this subject up in a time where we're dealing with COVID-19. This is not about COVID-19, I want to be super clear. This is about post, whenever we get past this, allowing our cadets to access the medical clinic. I believe, I don't know, I believe it would be ultimately a de minimis amount of money because we're talking maybe one to two, three maybe at the most cadets per year. And we're talking about access to the health, to the health center. Again, that's all the details I have. I've been in touch with our police officers who work day-to-day with these cadets. And it was really out of their concern. And it's around, it was really around the COVID-19, not so much that they would become or have issues or specific, excuse me, specifically to COVID-19, more so just about healthcare in general and the lack thereof for young people who eventually will probably be police officers, men and women in uniform in the city of West Palm Beach. So I just broached this to administration to perhaps consider. I'm clear that this isn't anything that's going to happen tomorrow, but I know that we have an upcoming budget. And again, there are probably a million things that I'm missing in terms of details. But I did want to be clear because I did clarify this, at least two of the four cadets currently do not have medical insurance and are part-time employees. They were explorers, they're now police cadets. And so I, that's my request for us to look into it, to perhaps see if there might be a way to mitigate or support these young people who will become future law enforcement with, with our police department.
Ms. Johnson, do you want to weigh in and perhaps discuss the issues that this entails?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have the HR director plugged in, in that they actually oversee the clinic. I think from an administrative standpoint, and this is a question that HR can answer, would be whether or not we can allow the cadets access without them being part of the city's insurance plan. You know, in my prior experience with overseeing a municipal health clinic, the two were always tied together, so you had an impact on your insurance. But I'm going to let Jose speak to the particulars of how we're structured here at the city as I've not yet delved into that level of detail.
Jose?
Well, there's a couple of issues. The reason why part-time employees are not eligible for either the city's insurance or access to the health clinic is because we, we have, we follow, you know, best practices and it's not very common for part-time 20 employees to have the same benefits as full-time employees. So that's just the overarching issue. So I'm not aware of any other comparable employers such as us that would allow part-time employees to have the same benefits as full-time employees in terms of healthcare. Another issue related to this is that you really can't take out just the two or the three cadets and give them a benefit that would not be open to all other part-time employees because you open the city up to some potential liability and union issues for disparate treatment of employees that some employees in the same category as others get access to the clinic or to the city's healthcare and others don't. So that, that's just an overarching issue. In terms of specific access to the clinic, the way that we have our cost savings and our return on investment measure set up, if you are on the city's health plan, that is the requirement in order to be able to access the clinic. Because both components together help to manage, the access to the clinic helps to manage the overhead that we're going to face in the city. So you really can't detach it for the, for, for that reason. And it would also create another precedent or treatment issue with full-time employees that we currently have that have opted out of the city's health plan. We have about 100 of them. And they would turn around then and come back and say, well, wait a minute. If a part-time employee can get access to the city's clinic without being on the health insurance, well, I should have the same benefit as a full-time employee to opt out of the city's health insurance and then receive access to the clinic. And all of those things would upend the balance that we have tried to reach to try to have both of the programs work in harmony so that we can achieve the cost savings that we do on our health plan.
Mr. Rodriguez, how many other part-time employees do we have at the city?
We have 39 part-time 20 employees right now.
Okay. And none of them have access to our healthcare or to the clinic?
No, only full-time employees or part-time 30 employees that are on the city's health insurance.
What's, what's the difference between a part-time 20 employee and part-time 30 employee?
The number of hours, the number of hours that they work. So a part-time 30 employee is considered a, you know, .75 FD. Police cadets are part-time 20.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Padusa, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I believe Jose actually answered the first one about whether we can separate the two, meaning the...
You're going in and out.
Our two workers comp. I assume that our part-time employees are all covered under workers comp for purposes of on-the-job injuries or sickness, correct?
Correct.
Sorry, I just have a problem here with my volume.
Did you hear Mr. Rodriguez's answer?
I think he said correct, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I don't have anything further right now.
Okay. Commissioner Cho, Madam President, Cho?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, you know, I understand this is a so say we one, so say we all situation to make sure that all part-time employees are treated equally. My question would be, I guess, to further that, I also understand the financial model that goes behind having access to the healthcare, the city's healthcare system helps to reduce the cost of the overall healthcare plan. So it's a financial benefit as well. Is there some consideration, and I don't know the legalities behind this, to giving a, a cost to access the city's healthcare, a minimal cost, so that those who can't afford a full, a full-time healthcare plan, you know, which would obviously make this a non-issue, but clearly there's some disparity there, would there be an option to providing to employees within that category, a minimal access fee, which would then create the equitable platform so that anyone who would pay the fee would get the access as well as offset the financial costs? And I don't know what that would be, perhaps that, that fee would be too restrictive.
Mr. Rodriguez, you want to weigh in on that? Actually, it's not the model that we have, but if you...
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's not the model, it's not the model that we have and we're not set up to charge a separate fee for the clinic, for the health center. And even if you did try to charge a separate fee, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to recoup those costs because it's very difficult to predict what the health issues that additional covered employees that use the health clinic will have. So it, you know, it kind of, you're increasing the risk in terms of the risk pool, as, as we say in the health and risk side of the equation. So it may not necessarily, you know, make sense. And just for a little bit of a frame of reference, right now, our clinic, depending on the month of the year that you're looking at, is already at about 100% capacity. Some months is as high as 115% capacity, which means that any additional employees that we would add to it would necessarily, aside from any fee that you would charge, would necessarily require either additional medical providers being hired or additional hours being given to the current medical providers to manage that additional workload. So that is also going to increase the cost and possibly impact the ROI that the clinic needs to operate under in term, in, in order to justify its existence and operation.
Commissioner Neering, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, if we could, you know, at the appropriate time, given, given that there are many priorities currently, could we have someone from your team, the appropriate staff, reach out to that department or those officers? Because again, they reached out because they saw a concern. Again, I broached it and said I would bring it forward, understanding that it wasn't going to be just, you know, turning on the light, that there would probably be some issues. But again, there are probably details that I'm leaving out. There might just be a way that we are able through, I don't know, police budget or, again, there may be something to help with this situation. The only thing that I would add, and I don't know that this, this to be true, perhaps, unlike some of, well, I'll just, I'll speak specifically to the cadets. All of these are future full-time employees. I mean, that is their goal. The idea is that they will be sponsored through the academy, through the police department. So what I'll tell you is just from, you know, kind of setting the culture of the organization from taking care of the employees, I think, again, I was clear that we weren't going to be able to just turn on a light switch and have them visiting the health clinic. But what I would, if, if, if Mayor, if you could support me in this, if we could at least have the appropriate staff reaching out and I can put whomever in touch with those police officers who work directly with those cadets, just so they can hear directly about why this isn't just an on-off situation, but there may be a way to mitigate it in some way or another.
Absolutely. I mean, have them reach out, or you could get their names to Ms. Johnson, they can reach out to her directly and she can have the conversation. Maybe she'll want to have Mr. Rodriguez in the room and they could hear kind of what the, what the facts are. I think I'd like to also have part of that conversation, why it is that they aren't on their parents' health insurance. Maybe there isn't health insurance, I don't know. But that would be a question I think that should be brought, that information should be brought to that meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I did ask that question, Mayor. Yeah, yeah, and I did ask that question, Mayor, this weekend, and apparently the parents, many of our explorers, about eighty percent, and this is according to the police officers, are from single-parent homes, and in these instances, the parents do not have health insurance themselves. And so I think that's where, in the COVID-19, I think, just kind of really shined a light on this. And again, there may be some other issues to that, but I did ask that question, Mayor, and they, in this case, it may change next year, but in this case, the parents do not have health insurance.
Okay, but while me, Ms. Johnson, if you could get together with Commissioner Neary and get the appropriate contact information and set up that meeting with those officers.
Will do, and I think we should involve Chief Adderley as well.
That's fine, whoever you think is appropriate. Commissioner Peduzzi, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, do, and currently, like in a workers' comp situation with our part-time employees, is their care managed through our clinic or is it managed externally through a third party?
It's managed externally through a third party.
Okay, so it's not like our part-time employees are ever in our health clinic, really? It's not like they're coordinating the care?
No, they only interact for the pre-employment screening and then after that, it would be the third-party provider.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next item, number four, trash along North Dixie and Palm Beach Lakes corridors, Commissioner Schof.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I'll have to get used to answering anyway. Thank you very much, and I appreciate staff putting this item on the agenda. I'm sure many of you, and for a while, we've had a lot of feedback from neighbors about these two corridors in particular. It started with the county-owned bus stop along Dixie Highway, of which the county did put a trash can there, but the lot is still fairly filled with garbage. And the trash that accumulates, both along the North Dixie corridor and the Palm Beach Lakes corridor, of just general litter within the swale, it starts to kind of contribute to the overall issues that occur within the north end in a lot of our neighborhoods in that there's trash along these commonly served areas, which makes a lot of residents start to feel like nobody cares, and so why should they? And then it just kind of takes the whole thing into a downward spiral. And so I wanted to have a conversation today to see how we might improve that. I mean, obviously, we're talking about changing the behaviors of a number of residents and the overall attitude. And so I don't know if that means allocating marketing campaign dollars, looking at clean and green teams, implementing trash cans there, or what we need to do to just try to generally improve this area. And I think once some of that gets cleaned up, it starts to uplift the entire area because what starts to spiral from these areas is illegal dumping along that same corridor and then our code enforcement and our sanitation having to work harder to try to identify those areas and get there quickly. And sometimes that doesn't always happen because these things pop up without, of course, anyone knowing. And so by the time communication gets back, we just have this downward spiral. And so I think if we can start to address the issue as it happens from its very base core, then we can eliminate some of those downstream effects that start to happen.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, I think we have Josh, but I'll let you take it from here and you could direct it to wherever you want to. Ms. Johnson, you're on mute. You are on mute. You are still on mute. The mute button? I can't hear you. There we go.
Yeah, I had a glitch, so I was trying to indicate that it was having trouble, but I am here now. Yes. I did ask Mr. McDermott to be prepared to maybe kind of walk us through our schedule along those corridors for cleanup and then perhaps the impact, you know, of us putting trash cans. We did look into this in the past, and of course, there is, you know, some concern about the fiscal impact, but I'll turn it over to Mr. McDermott.
Hi, everybody. So I have a document I wanted to share with you guys. Let me pull it up real quick. So this is a cost analysis that we completed yesterday, actually. This is our right-of-way cans or garbage cans that we have in the right-of-way. So we have, we don't have a standardized can that we use in the right-of-way. We have, we go from twenty gallons up to ninety-six gallons. The initial cost to purchase these containers is anywhere from $299 to $3,500. The more expensive one is what we call the Big Bellies, and it has a solar-powered compactor. The service level, I can zoom in on this if you guys can't see this, the low table. So the service, the frequency of service for the right-of-way containers varies from once a week up to seven days a week, depending on where they're located. So along Palm Beach Lakes, we don't have any cans right there on the corridor. The Dixie one, just to address the Dixie Highway bus stop, we are in contact with Palm Tran. They do have an agreement with us where they have to maintain all their bus stops with shelters in place. So I've actually, I was in contact with them prior to the COVID pandemic, so I'm gonna get back in contact with them and talk to them about the stops where they don't have shelters. And we can also work with code enforcement on properties next to the bus stops to make sure they keep those clean as well. Does anyone have any comments on the table?
I don't see any yet, so...
So I can go back to it. So the service cost, the labor required to service the right-of-way receptacles, seven days a week. We have two sanitation operators that can currently perform that, four hours a day, seven days a week. So we came up with a yearly cost of forty-five thousand plus benefits, it's around fifty-four thousand. So that doesn't include the cost of the vehicle. This is something that we're looking at right now. We started talking, I came to Public Works almost a year ago. Since then, I've probably received, on average, one request per month for cans in the right-of-way. Some of them are duplicate requests, but for the most part, it's a, you know, it's on average one request a month. So right now, we don't believe that placing cans in the right-of-way is the ultimate solution. We've been working with Parks and Rec. They maintain the right-of-ways and some of the contracts associated with right-of-ways, particularly Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. I've spoke to Leah this morning about that, and she's amped up the cleaning along Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. Again, I don't think placing cans is always a solution. A lot of times, people don't use the right-of-way cans, certain cases. Say, for instance, Palm Beach Lakes from Australian to Tamara, there's no place to safely service the right-of-way cans if we were to put them out there. Street sweeping, I know that was mentioned as well, but street sweeping is more for pollution control, it's more for the stormwater system. The street sweeper only cleans maybe two-thirds of the lane itself, but it concentrates mostly on the curving gutter area. So you have a lot of accumulation of trash in the swell area, which is, you know, you have to do manually, you have to get out there with a, you know, personnel. Armando and I have been talking about this since him and I have been working together, and he is working on a contract with Clean Streets. I think that's the name of the contractor. Armando, you want to touch on that real quick?
Oh, yes. Good morning, Commissioner. So we have the Clean Team contract, which expired, and that's gonna be going back up for Request for Proposal, probably this week. And we added additional funds into that contract to be able to reach some of these areas that are problem areas. In the past, we just kind of focused on only the north end and very specific parts of the north end, but we are gonna add a few more thousand dollars to that contract so that it can expand upon the areas in the north end where we can hit some hotspots and even in the south end if needed. So we wanted to expand that program. It also gives job opportunities, obviously, for folks who need them in the north end. The other thing, Commissioner Schof, you alluded to it, we have had some internal discussions on some kind of a public outreach campaign on littering and litter control. And for those of you who are my age, you probably remember the, I think it was Woodsy Owl and Give a Hoot and Don't Pollute. You know, those little campaigns could be quite effective if you just kind of hit folks over and over again with the same message. And so we have talked internally about launching something like that, and maybe we reward good behavior. We've talked, we've thrown a few ideas around. Obviously, with the COVID-19, it's kind of put a bit of a delay on things, and particularly public campaigns are not gonna get a whole lot of attention right now. So, but we are gonna revisit that and we'll be kind of giving you some ideas of what that might look like in the near future.
A question for Josh.
Yes, sir.
Other areas where we have placed containers, do we have any historical data? I mean, are they used? Does it seem to help? What do we know from what we've done in the past with these containers?
I don't think we have any historical data. As far as if they work or not, we service them. We increase the service if they're used more frequently, so that's definitely something we can start looking at. We actually have a consultant we're working with, finalizing the order. We're gonna have them look at this service and, see, this is a, this is kind of unique, too. We don't, residential, we charge our customers for the service we provide them for residential and for commercial. This is a, this is a service that we don't, we don't get paid for, so it's an expense that we can't account for. So that's another reason we hesitate to place additional trash cans out there when people request them. But it's something I could definitely look at to see if the ones that we have in place actually do work.
And the numbers you put on the chart assume they seven-day-a-week service. That could probably be ratcheted down, starting off with maybe two or three days a week, and we'll see what the need is. I mean, I understand what Madam President is saying, it's the broken window syndrome. As people see their neighborhood sink into some disrepair or disregard for cleanliness, it affects their approach. That's one reason why we launched the Operation Clean Streets, to try to get some of these, and we're still working with that, get some of these vacant abandoned cars off the roads and to have a more intentional fight against illegal dumping, and we'll continue that. So, anyway, Madam President, you did have a question?
Yes, thank you. Josh, you had alluded to looking through parks to up the services that were already taking place. Can you tell me what, is there a schedule there currently or what services are currently taking place?
Let me see if Leah, she's actually listening in, but she's not part of the meeting. She, let me see if she can answer that question. Hold on one second.
Or if not, we can have her get with Madam President and give her more information. Was there somebody you were going with that, Madam President?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just looking to see what the service level is now. And again, you know, my intent there, as Armando had indicated, Don't Mess With Texas was the original state of Texas, Don't Pollute campaign. So perhaps there's a way to kind of marry those two together. We've seen a number of marketing campaigns like that, Go Be The Fish That Eats Plastic. And I know it may sound silly, but what we're looking here to do is to modify behavior. And so whatever way we can use to do that, be it that it now becomes rewarding to me in some way to have like a fun decorated trash can, and that's where I go to put my trash, whether it talks to me, whatever it really takes. You know, I'm looking to try to make sure that we can modify those behaviors. And if we can do that, then the labor on the other side of cleaning up becomes not needed. But I understand from Josh's presentation, we're looking at significant capital outlays. If we can just approach it at first, as Armando was indicating, as a clean and green team, and that way, there is a labor force that is out cleaning up the streets and then couple that with trying to modify that behavior. You know, to me, the end goal is to have cleaner streets and to not see that garbage because of the things that were indicated. You know, it indicates something to visitors to our city, to people who live in our city. And if we can clean that up and then modify that behavior to get it to stop, to me, that's the win. So if, what I'm understanding from Armando is that's already in place, that we're looking to have clean and green teams out on those corridors?
Yes, so we're gonna expand the, we had the Clean Team, obviously, already in place. The contract expired, they've still been operating month to month, but the RFP is gonna go out and it's gonna include more funding so they can expand their services.
Okay, and I do have a response from Leah. She says, when they maintain the swells and medians once a week during the peak season and every two weeks slower during the slower growing season. And I would also ask commissioners to use your own network. You've got these neighborhood groups and they should, hopefully, we can get the word through them, that hopefully they can also encourage their neighbors to take more of a responsibility for this. There's often a request for the city to come talk about different projects and, you know, to feed them with information about what we're doing, to engage them, to solicit their opinion, well, let's engage them to help us keep the neighborhoods clean as well. So it's a two-way street here. These are people that are living there, we have these organizations, they would associations and stuff, let's have them help us get the word out. I will also talk to communications to see if they have any ideas, maybe some best practices from other cities around the state or the nation to see...
How do I hit the chat button? Someone want to make comments?
Okay, all right.
Where you want to actually talk?
Well, you probably heard that.
Yeah, I did. All right, what's your comment? Wow, just interrupting there, but that's cool.
Yeah, you know, technology is still new. I just wanted to weigh in. I'm glad to hear the discussion about as the first step, we look at, you know, a campaign and perhaps reaching out to the neighbors to help us in this effort. And I certainly understand the impact, you know, of the broken window syndrome, but I just wanted to caution the discussion about increased capital costs because we are in the budget process and we are going to be challenged with departments submitting flat or reduced budgets. So I just need to bring my budget discussion to this discussion. And with that, I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
No, you don't have to be done. I mean, we appreciate your weighing in. I mean, that's quite appropriate. Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I just had a question, Josh, that you mentioned about code enforcement, and I think you were talking about it as it relates to the bus coverings. Are there other opportunities for us to leverage code enforcement? Obviously, I realize, you know, in the areas of public property or city property, we're the ones who need to maintain that. And then maybe in the areas where it's private property, it's not that private individual who's littering on their lot. I would say the third area that I hear a lot of complaints about littering is also on the ninety-five entrances and those corners right there where sometimes people are standing panhandling and there's a lot of litter there as well. So I don't know if it's code enforcement or other creative measures, but those are the areas that I'm hearing the most litter being reported.
It's definitely a combination. The bus stop that we were speaking about earlier, we involved code enforcement. We also involved Palm Tran. Once they put their garbage can in place, we worked with Mark Joyce because the litter was on the property and it was, it was a little bit different, it was a unique situation. So we involved Mark Joyce. We do have our own code enforcement officers. We have a supervisor funded by the CRA and another officer funded by the CRA, but they concentrate mostly on the downtown area. So we have one additional code enforcement officer who does the rest of the city. So they can, it is a responsibility of the property owner to maintain the property and the adjacent right-of-way. So we can involve, depending on the situation, code enforcement to help with keeping the property clean.
And what about, do we have any leverage with the ninety-five?
Ninety, I'm not sure. I could, I could talk to DOT about that, but I'm not sure what the maintenance agreements are. Some of the areas, we do have maintenance agreements. So Leah, again, would Parks and Rec maintain... so Leah, again, would, um, Parks and Rec maintains the, um, the right-aways and some of those maintenance agreements, so we might have some of those, uh, agreements that, that cover the ninety above areas. I'll check into that.
Madam President, you had a follow-up?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, I had a question, uh, as it pertains to code enforcement. So in front of my residential house, I am tasked with maintaining the swale. So most of these are commercial properties. So when it comes to commercial properties, um, is that commercial property tasked with maintaining that common area? Um, is that something that we could look to say, you know, hey, business, just to clarify, this swale is yours to maintain, and have everybody take responsibility for the section that is really theirs to maintain?
I think so. Whoever the property owner is, it should be on, it should be their responsibility.
Is that something that is an easy first step? We could maybe send out a letter to those property owners to just say, hey, this is a reminder, um, early warning?
We could, we could definitely do some outreach, depending on the location. I'd want to target one, one area first.
Sure. At, at your discretion, I would say that that would be a really great first step, to just let them know that this is their responsibility, perhaps someone doesn't know. Um, but then if we start to allow them the opportunity to, um, get, get it cleaned up in an order, I think that helps contribute for everything. And then on top of that, additional clean and green team dollars, we start to layer on all these things that, that everybody pitches in, certainly supportive of taking it out to neighborhood associations. Again, I think some of the issue here is it is a lot, a lot of commercial corridors, so it's not a lot of the neighbors, it's, um, businesses that just may not be aware that they're, they're responsible for maintaining that area.
Okay, we could work on putting some kind of communication out to, uh, to those commercial businesses, uh, to see if they will, to remind them of their responsibilities.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else on this? All right, so we will, uh, work with, uh, Armando and the, and the, and the Green Team, or Clean and Green, whatever they're called, on that RFP, and see if we could beef that up, and we'll work internally on getting something out to the commercial property owners. Okay, uh, that's, anything else on this item? I don't see any other.
Mayor, I'll follow up on the I-95 corridor.
Yes, please, please. Thank you. All right, um, I don't have anything on Mayor's Matters. Uh, is there any other, uh, all right, Commissioner Lambert, you have something, uh, on, on other? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question on timing. I know that, uh, at the end of 2019, we were talking about bringing back some commission discussion, as well as public discussion as it relates to the Bicycle Master Plan and, um, Flagler Drive.
Yeah, with some point, it, it is on our agenda to bring to the commission and also do an aggressive, uh, community outreach on, outreach on the entire, uh, uh, Master Bike Plan, uh, so to, to remind people, remind commissioners, uh, what it was that had been previously approved. And, uh, we don't have dates yet, but that's certainly something that is on our, our radar. Uh, and I will sit down with staff and see if we could come up with a, a, a more specific timeframe to start going out. That's obviously, uh, in this, in this day and time, it's a different form of communication. So I don't know if that would be some kind of virtual town hall or what, so we need to put our heads together as the, the best approach to getting the word out on what that master, Bike Master Plan looked like.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, anything else? Uh, seeing none, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. I think we're getting this down to a, uh, to a science. I don't want to get too used to it. I miss you guys. But anyway, this is our new normal. All right, uh, good, good day, everyone. Talk to you later.
Thank you, bye.